All right, good evening. Welcome to the November 6th meeting of the Berkeley School Board. If you want to follow along on our online agenda, the agenda is posted on the district website. The Board will conduct district business as usual, including taking action on recommendations for reparations tonight. This will be followed by a governance team workshop. The Board will then transition to a less formal format as Director stepped down from the dais to join the facilitator at the table for a workshop-style study session. I'm now calling the meeting to order at 6:44 PM. Ms. Charis, will you please call the official role for the meeting tonight?
Director Jennifer Shinoski.
Here.
Director Laura Babbitt.
Here.
Director Mike Chang.
Here.
Vice President Kadee J. Brown.
Present.
President Anna Vasudev.
Present.
Our student directors are excused this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Charis. We will now approve the agenda for this evening's meeting. Colleagues, are there any suggested changes? And if not, is there a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve this evening's agenda.
I second.
All directors in favor?
Aye.
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 Seeing no notes or abstentions? Motion passes. Thanks. We will now report out from our closed session. Vice President Brown, would you please report out on closed session?
Yes, good evening. This evening's closed session was called to order at 5:40 PM with Directors Chang, Shinoski, Brown, and Vasudev present. For item 2.1, the motion was made to approve the proposed settlement. And the motion was made by Director Chang, seconded by Director Shinoski, and all directors voted in favor. For item 2.1.2, it was moved by Director Shinoski, seconded by Director Chang, and all directors voted in favor. For item 2.2, the Board discussed and provided direction. And finally, for item 2.3, it was moved by Director Shinoski, seconded by Director Chang. Directors Vasudev, Chang, and Shinoski voted in favor. Director Brown voted no. This concludes our closed session notes. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Vice President Brown. We will now move on to the public comments component of our agenda. Before we begin, I'd like to remind you of our decorum expectations during this and all parts of tonight's meeting. No person shall disturb the order of this meeting. Such behavior includes, but is not limited to booing, hissing, creating or participating in a physical disturbance, speaking out of turn in violation of applicable rules, preventing or attempting to prevent others who have the floor from speaking, preventing others from observing the meeting, entering into or remaining in the area of the meeting room that is not open to the public, or approaching the dais without permission. This evening's public comment period is in person and limited to a total of 10 minutes, with each speaker allotted, we'll do, two minutes to speak. Please plan your comments accordingly. As a reminder, the Board does not respond directly to commenters or questions made during public comment. However, Board members, the superintendent, and staff do take notes during public comment and may follow up with the speakers after the meeting. To keep things moving, I'd like to ask the speaker who's next in line to come forward and wait near the mic. And I apologize in advance if I mispronounce your name. We'll now begin with our public comments and who are here in person. And per our tradition, we'll start with any student commenters. I see no student commenters. And we'll start with Christina Harb, followed by Sheila for Agenda Item 8.1. So you'll have two minutes each.
Hi, it's nice to see you guys. I'm here to just speak in support of item 8.1, the harm report suggested by the Reparations Task Force. So just hoping that you'll vote yes on that tonight. And then also want to invite you all to an action that a couple Berkeley students will be participating in on Saturday. It's going to be a children's press conference happening Saturday at 11:00 AM at the Children's Hospital Research Center in like North Oakland area. Yeah, North Oakland, South Berkeley, I don't know what it's called. And so I can send follow-up information to you all, but a couple students will be speaking at a children's press conference. It is commemorating one year since the children of Gaza held their own press conference. And so, yeah, a couple Palestinian Berkeley students are going to be there and really love to just, you know, have you guys come and see what it's about. And yeah, I thank you all for your time and have a good night.
Thank you. Next comment is Sheila. You'll have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Sheila Jiven, and I'm also just here to support, sorry, support of the reparations in BUSD. And thank you for agendizing item 8.1. I ask you to vote in favor of item 8.1 based on the superintendent's recommendation, which stems from the work of the BUSD Reparations Task Force. I'm super appreciative. And I really hope that you vote in support of the harm report and moving forward on the reparations work. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And that now concludes the public comment period. Thank you to everyone who came to speak. Oh, we have a union comment? You have an online comment? Oh, I see. Okay. Now people raise their hand. All right, Ms. Charis. We'll hear the online commenters then. Can you give them two minutes each? Do there's only, I only see three. Is that correct? Yep. Okay, we'll start with Camila Moore, followed by Anna Teas, and then the last comment will be Kat.
Hello, everyone. Hello, everyone. My name is Camila Moore. I served as the Chairperson of the First of the Nation California Reparations Task Force. I'm calling to ask for the Board to vote in favor of item 8.1 based on the superintendent's recommendation, which stems from the work of the BSU, BUSD Reparations Task Force. I'm generally supportive, definitely supportive of the district task force and appreciative of BUSD School Board's support. Also, item 8.1 is an important first step in moving forward with reparations in BUSD. And a little bit off the cusp, we know that President-elect Trump in, you know, his campaign has stated his intent in alignment with Project 2025 to eliminate the Department of Education, to potentially withhold federal funds from school districts that teach about Native American genocide and chattel slavery. So I'll say all that to say that, you know, you all voting in favor of item 8.1 is even more important now than ever before. And this district might be getting a lot more media attention in the next coming years with the transformative work that you all are doing for reparations for Black students, particularly those who are descendants of slaves. And so I just want to encourage you all to continue to do this great positive transformative work because we're going to need it more than ever before. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to Anna Teas, and then our last online public comment will be from Kat Smith.
Hi, can folks hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Anna Teas, and I am a BUSD parent at John Muir and Willard. I'm a 10-year resident of South Berkeley, and I was a member of the BUSD Reparations Task Force earlier this year. Thank you for your support in pursuing reparations in BUSD and for agendizing it on this week's meeting. I urge you to vote in favor of item 8.1 based on the superintendent's recommendation, which stems from the work of our task force. And I want to state that repairing the impacts of slavery and its legacies of discriminatory policies is a necessary action to bring to life the promise of democracy. And this is something that we have power over here in BUSD in a moment where we may feel powerless at the state level in terms of our contribution to the presidential election. As you know, this task force recommendations were the result of meaningful and thorough community outreach, consultations with experts, and research into existing reparations frameworks and historical examples of reparations, as was also kind of noted by our previous speaker. And just lastly, item 8.1 is an important first step in moving forward with reparations in BUSD. I thank you in advance for your support, for your courageous choices, and I am here to be a supportive, active participant to get others in Berkeley to stand by this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next commenter and last online public commenter would be Kat Smith.
Hello, can you all hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you all. Sorry that I couldn't join in person. My name's Kat Smith. I am a former Berkeley High student, as well as BUSD alum. I grew up in West Berkeley and was honored to have the opportunity to help facilitate the BUSD Reparations Task Force. I'm here to speak on behalf of suggesting that support for item 8.1, which has been recommended by the superintendent, move forward through this board tonight. I think there's two things that come to mind. First and foremost, it's an essential part of the recommendations in their entirety. So without this harm report and being able to kind of truly understand the way in which the district has been complicit in some of the less than favorable ways in which descendants of chattel slavery have experienced the district, we don't know how to move forward. And then I think, similar to what Chairperson Moore and what Anna just said, I think we all are witnessing what happens when we don't look at history to think about a path of going forward with the presidential election. We have a tremendous opportunity for the district to think about identifying harms and being able to then say, what are the solutions that are necessary going forward with some precision? So I think that the harm report is a critical part of the Reparation Task Force work and being able to say enthusiastically tonight with great favor that you all want to move forward, that is a really great indication of support and respect for the task force's work over the last year and some change. Thank you all, and I hope you have a wonderful evening.
Great, thank you. That now concludes the public comment period. Thank you to everyone who came to speak and also participated online. If you did not get to speak, you can always email the Board directly at boardofed@berkeley.net, or you can contact us individually. We'll now hear from our unions. Ms. Charis, we have union comments?
Hello, Superintendent Ford Murthell and the Berkeley School Board Directors. I know we are all hosting a lot of complicated personal feelings and holding space for our students as we all process the results of last night's election. I know many in our community are stunned by the rightward shift and its implications on our rights. Once again, we will be in resistance mode, doing what we can to fight for our students, families, workers, and the future. In the coming years, we can be certain that many of the institutions and rights that we hold dear will be under attack, including the right to a fully funded public education. We've been here before, and we shouldn't be surprised by anything at this point. That being said, there will be opportunities to turn the tide towards justice. It will take all of us, Board members, administrators, educators, and our wider community. Our work has a direct impact on the next generation, who will be the ones that will push this country forward. We'll carry on with our convictions and do everything we can to limit the damage of the new administration. This is what is in front of us, and I know we can meet the moment. I also wanted to take some time to celebrate the work of our educators. The data presentation last week highlighted the work our educators have taken on over the past two years. Coming out of the pandemic, where we literally could not staff classrooms, these gains speak volumes to improvements our educators have made inside the classroom and in Tier 2 interventions. There have been improved horizontal and vertical alignment, which creates more consistent outcomes for our students. Our students on the whole, and for almost every subgroup, have well outperformed the county and the state. This combined with minimal comparative learning loss during the COVID lockdown shows real sustained improvement in literacy and math. Our educators take this work seriously. We should continue to see gains with the combination of a clear vision from district leadership and educators implementing great practices in the classroom. As a district, we need to make sure that these efforts are protected from potential budget reductions, so this work can continue. Knowing that the next few years may contain unpredictable and negative impacts on public education and our staff, we need to really make sure all of our available resources, starting now, are utilized in a way that directly supports the achievement of our students and the retention of our staff in what will be a difficult environment for public education.
Great, thank you, Ms. Charis. Now we will move on to our consent calendar. Colleagues, can I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move.
Moved by Director Shinoski. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Director Chang. All directors in favor? Say aye.
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 Seeing no notes or abstentions? Seeing none, the motion passes. All right, and now we will move on to Agenda Item 8.1, which will be introduced by the superintendent, which is an action item.
Good evening, Board Directors and members of the public. I'm here to provide an update to the October update that I provided to you all just two weeks ago. Apologies, I'll get started in just a minute when the deck is up and I have, and I can move on.
Ms. Charis, this screen's like really grainy. Is there...
Yeah, I think they're all looking like this.
Are they all like that? Okay. Just wondering if you'll be able to see the presentation?
So as we're getting started, again, this is an update following the follow-up that I provided to the Board and the community members on October 9th. Just a quick reminder, the Reparations Task Force was created in Berkeley in response to public and community requests for the Board to gather, for the BUSD to engage and answer three questions. What do reparations look like in BUSD? How could BUSD fund reparations? And how can and should BUSD implement such a program? The task force had 15 members that met 13 times from April 2023 to June 2024. Those convenings included research around existing reparations frameworks, examples of reparations, consultations with experts, and ongoing engagement of community members and feedback. That committee or that task force came before you all on June 12th with a simple ask, which was that the Board members commit to fully exploring task force recommendations in the fall. And as a result, you all directed me, Superintendent, to do that exploration. The task force recommendations and the recommendations that I explored are here before you on the screen in no specific order. The recommendations were to create a harm report, to develop, adopt, and deploy curriculum on the history and legacy of chattel slavery at the federal, state, and local levels, and then to provide financial payments for educational purposes to BUSD descendants, students. The task force went a step further by also making recommendations on how these efforts might be funded. And they came up with three recommendations. The first is to solicit philanthropic, I'm sorry, corporate giving, initiate a lawsuit by BUSD, and propose a tax measure via initiative. The task force, very thorough in their work, also gave us potential next steps as a district, and those next steps are here on this slide. Again, they were shared with you both on the June 12th presentation by the task force, as well as in my update on October 9th. As a result of all of that, you all asked me again to come back and explore the recommendations. I came back before you all on October 9th and provided updates on the various recommendations of the task force. I will not go through them all. However, the one that I spent the most time with, as it is the one that we had moved the furthest with, if you will, was the harm report. This was also the one that we spent the most time with because this, in many ways, is foundational to any attempt to understand the experiences of descendants of chattel slavery and therefore to respond or repair the harm. The harm report, as mentioned by the task force itself, and again, as shared on the 9th, is foundational to this work. It's the primary source of research, historical data on student outcomes and interviews. So it'll be actually capturing the experiences and narratives of our students to, again, figure out what their experiences are so that we can figure out, again, how we want to respond to and improve those experiences. It details the institutional activities by BUSD that impacted descendant students, as well as reparative actions BUSD has undertaken. The data and information from this report or for this report will be important for us to effectively tailor our remedies and educational strategies. In the presentation update on the 9th, I also shared with you some information that we had with harm reports. We estimated the cost of this report to be about $50,000. And I had also shared at that time that we had went ahead and solicited foundation support as recommended by the Reparations Task Force and applied for a matching fund grant from Liberated Ventures on BUSD's behalf. We are still, as of today, awaiting feedback or the outcome of that grant application. We also shared with the Board and the members of the public that the estimated timeline to complete a harm report is about 12 months and that the request for proposals, or the RFP, which you use to actually invite folks to apply, to conduct the harm report, typically takes about three months. Not exact, but it's an estimate of how long it takes to both draft and then also open up the RFP and then get folks to make bids and then make the decision on who will be the actual person facilitating the harm report. And then the gathering and the finalizing of the documentation in the report will take about six to nine months. That's about a 12-month process. And again, this was another reason why this was the part or the recommendation that was kind of spent the most time on because, again, it's foundational and it takes some time to actually get the information and create the report itself. Recommended next steps at that point was for staff to bring, I recommended that the staff meet, would bring forth a proposal to you all in October for your consideration. And I'm here this evening with that proposal. And so tonight, what I'm asking for us to do is just to review the steps taken since October 9th, as well as respond to the recommendation that I make to you all, specifically around the recommendations of the task force. I did want to make sure to pause and remind that we had an initial preliminary legal analysis of the recommendation. That was something that was really important to Board members, and I made sure in the October 9th presentation to confirm that it had been done. But after October 9th, the Board was not only able to review that legal analysis, but also engaged with legal counsel and asked questions, et cetera. And so the discussion of the recommendations from legal counsel has happened since October 9th. I also wanted to share with you all that there has been examples of some reporting of harm done in education, and specifically in BUSD. And so those types of documents already exist. Again, this harm report would be able to give us a more detailed, in a more detailed way, capture the experience of our students, who are descendants of chattel slavery. Again, to make sure that BUSD appropriately assigns any type of repair or restorative efforts in response. So here are my recommendations. I recommend that the Board of Education votes to proceed with the harm report under four conditions, and those conditions are as follows. The first condition or recommendation is that we do not call it a harm report, that the Board considers renaming the report with a name that more accurately reflects the intent and the content of the report. If you recall, again, the task force asks for the harm report to both document activities that negatively impacted descendants of students, as well as reparative activities that BUSD has undertaken. And so harm report feels and sounds incomplete. So that's the first consideration for my recommendation to proceed. The second recommendation is that we ensure the report itself and its contents are informed by the legal guidance and consultation that we received and with ongoing consultation and legal guidance, making sure that we are compliant with all the laws, but also doing things in the ways that protect our district. A little bit redundant, but we want to double down on the fact that we are really being responsive and taking care of our babies and being good stewards of our district. My other recommendation is that the RFP, or the request for proposal, that details the parameters, the process, the scope, and the content of the report is also informed by legal analysis, guidance, and consultation. And then the last consideration is that we do not move forward until we, sorry, we do not move forward with the final product of drafting the harm report until I have secured or we have secured matching funds to cover the cost of reports. Again, recall that in my October 9th presentation, I said that we had already applied for a grant for match funding. And again, as of tonight, are waiting for the outcome of that grant application. On this slide, I've just summarized the four conditions. So again, my recommendation is that BUSD proceeds with the harm report, renaming the report, ensuring that the report and the RFP for the report are based on legal analysis, guidance, and consultation, and that we work to secure match funding to cover the cost of the report. That is the follow-up to my follow-up, Directors. I'm open to any questions or feedback or discussion.
Great. Colleagues, do we have any questions or comments before we take action? Vice President Brown?
I have a few comments. I thought we were going to get the opportunity to make our public comments this evening, Board comments, rather, this evening. So I'm going to share them now, if that's okay with you. I just want to thank the public speakers who spoke tonight in regards to this item, item 8.1. And a special thank you to Chair Moore, the former Chair of the California Reparations Task Force, who said some really powerful words this evening and helped us to kind of center and ground in really where we are as a community. And so those words were really important. And I want to thank you for not just saying those, but for your participation and your support of our Berkeley reparations project. I'd also like to thank all of those who emailed and really, really flooded our inboxes in support of reparations, not just in preparation for tonight's vote, but for the last couple of years. And so we're really, really thankful to hear from our community on this very important item. I say this all the time, and I'll say it again. Berkeley is a place of firsts. And we were the first school district to desegregate without a court order, the first city to lead the charge on curb cuts. You all know the stories of all of our firsts. And tonight, we have the opportunity to be the first again in the first school district to move forward with what has been a long and thoughtful, but also intentional process for reparations. And so I'd like to offer the biggest thank you that I can to the Reparations Task Force comprised of 15 brilliant, well-connected, Berkeley-minded, and student-focused stakeholders for the work that they did to be able to provide us with these important recommendations. And specifically, the one recommendation that we are voting on tonight, which is as the superintendent expressed to move forward with the harm report. This just makes sense to me, as I'm sure it does with my Board colleagues. And I'd like to thank the superintendent for your work and for bringing this proposal forward along with the additional recommendations that you offered for our consideration tonight. Your presentation, of course, was both informative and thorough. And I, for the first time, do not have any questions, just an appreciation for the work. So I'm happy to move this when the time comes, knowing that our vote tonight, our collective vote tonight, will go down in the history books as another Berkeley first. So thank you.
Colleagues, any questions or comments? Before we take action? I mean, I'll just say, Superintendent, I really appreciate you taking the time to consult with counsel to make sure that we were able to have that discussion ahead of tonight and to make sure that feedback was incorporated as part of your recommendation. So thank you for doing that. And, you know, just from my perspective, just appreciate the thoughtfulness and making sure that there is legal counsel involved in every step of the way. So thank you. I'm looking to see if anyone else has comments? Nope. Chair, are you ready for the motion? All right. Vice President Brown?
I am happy to move this evening's item 8.1 to move forward with the harm report, given the recommendation from the superintendent.
I'll second. Ms. Charis, can you color?
Director Shinoski?
Yes.
Director Babbitt?
Yes.
Director Chang?
Aye.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
President Vasudev?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Thank you, Superintendent. And hold that clap because now we're moving to Agenda Item 9, which is our governance team workshop, which I'm really excited about. We will be discussing how to move forward on the superintendent's evaluation. So very happy to have CSBA here with us. And I will turn it to our facilitator colleagues before we step down from the dais. Before we step down from the dais for this discussion, wanted to make sure that you look at the informational items under Agenda Item 10, also pointing those out for the public. All right, thank you very much. And now the board will get to our Governance Team Workshop.
Yeah, definitely.
Because we are on Zoom to make sure that these mics get passed around so everyone can, okay, because we are going to...
Do you want to remove these suitages, maybe?
Sure, please.
All right, so are we moving now?
Only six.
For those of you joining us via Zoom, we will transition to a different format now. So we will be closing down the remote portion of the meeting, as this will now go into an in-person only. Thank you for joining us this evening. Good night.